All right, good evening, everyone. It's 6:30 on Monday evening, October 7th. This is a regular meeting of the Arlington City Council. I'm Rich Nagel, and I'm mayor, and I'll be presiding at the meeting. At this time, I'll call the meeting to order, and would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I would like to move Resolution 56-2019, a resolution appointing a new member to the Arlington City Council up to the next position, and I would ask Joe Morgan to come forward, please. I'm sorry, I have to do the resolution first. Give you some exercise there. Sorry, Kurt, that was just a practice round. That was just practice, practice. Okay. Resolution 56-2019, and I would like to read it aloud. A resolution appointing a new member to the Arlington City Council, whereas a vacancy exists in the Arlington City Council due to the resignation of Councilmember Yashewski, said resignation given by Councilmember Highland, whoops, Councilmember Yashewski effective September 17th. Whereas pursuant to City Council Resolution 49-2019, the resignation of Councilmember Yashewski has been accepted by the City Council, and a vacancy has been declared as of September 17th, 2019. Whereas Joe Morgan is an individual eligible and well-qualified to fill the office of Arlington City Councilmember until the completion of the existing term. Whereas Chapter 3, Section 13 of the Arlington City Charter allows for a vacancy to be filled for an unexpired term of such official by resolution of the council. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of Arlington hereby appoints Joe Morgan as a member of the Arlington City Council to serve in such office until the completion of former Councilmember Ben Yashewski's term. All right, I would ask someone to introduce this resolution.
I'll introduce Resolution 56-2019, a resolution adopting a new member, Joe Morgan, to the Arlington City Council.
Is there a second?
Second.
Resolution 56-2019, which deals with a resolution appointing a new member to the Arlington City Council, was introduced by Councilmember Batchor, seconded by Councilmember Haddelsted. We will vote on said resolution by roll call. Councilmember Cowell.
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Haddelsted.
Yes.
And Councilmember Gilman.
Yes.
Four councilmembers in favor? None opposed? And there is one vacant, there's currently no vacancies, but swearing-in will take place now. Now you could come forward.
Is that going to bother you at all?
No, because I'm just going to give you. Okay. If you would raise your right hand, or if you'd like me, please, and that's on there. Hi, Joe Morgan.
Hi, Joe Morgan.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the state of Minnesota.
The Constitution of the state of Minnesota.
And the Charter of the city of Arlington.
And the Charter of the city of Arlington.
And to discharge faithfully the duties devolving upon me.
And to discharge faithfully the duties devolving upon me.
As Councilmember of the city of Arlington.
As Councilmember of the city of Arlington.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
Congratulations. Welcome aboard.
Yes.
Okay. Congratulations, Joe. Excuse me, Kurt. Let's see, do you want, why don't you go ahead and sign that one if you have a pen handy, Joe? I'll get another copy for you. We got a lefty next to you.
Oh, all right, bumping elbows.
Just sign that one, I'll take that one back here for Pat's signature.
Oh.
All right, thank you.
And Joe just sat here, Ashley, so are you ever able to get into know this agenda, or did you just use the PDF?
I had just used the PDF. I was going to ask others.
Michelle, would you?
Yeah, I can.
That'd be wonderful. Okay, there's for you. Okay, at this time, I'd like to take roll call, just for the record. Councilmember Haddelsted.
Here.
Councilmember Cowell.
Here.
Councilmember Gilman.
Here.
Councilmember Batchor.
Here.
Councilmember Morgan.
Here.
All councilmembers are present. At this time, we'll, I would ask for any agenda items or changes, additions or changes? Okay, you have.
Mr. Mayor, if we could remove item 5C, approved temporary on-sale liquor license for Relay for Life.
Any other changes?
Is that, is that just for, just to table it, or they don't want it anymore, or what?
When I talked to Jerry.
Odenthal?
Odenthal. We had sent an email message in September asking her to provide us with the information. I contacted her and talked to her last week, at which point she said that if she could get it to us, she would, if not, that we, they won't be doing it, so.
Okay.
My understanding is that they won't be doing it, and I never did hear back from her or receive a call, so I'm assuming that she knew that was our deadline.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Motion to approve the amendment as amended. It was amended.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Batchor, seconded by Councilmember Cowell, to approve the agenda with the one change, that being striking item 5C under the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried. Going down to the consent agenda, consists of these four, or these three items. Item A, approval of September 26, 2019, special council meeting minutes. Item B, accept resignation of Becca Lundstrom from the Community Center Committee, and the new item C would be approval of the bills.
Make a motion to approve consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Cowell, seconded by Councilmember Gilman, to appoint, to approve the consent agenda as read. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion is carried. Okay, at this time, I would invite anyone from the audience that wants to speak to the council. Okay? Lisa Paz Vogel, and I just remind the, about the ground rules here, five minutes to express your thoughts and input. This is, this is a time for the council to listen, not to enter into conversation or anything like that, so.
Thank you.
I'm sure that probably what you're going to be talking about is Northland Drying, and that is further on in the old business section, update on Northland Drying, so that is, that is where the council will get involved with discussing.
Okay.
That topic, so your five minutes, go ahead.
Okay. If someone would have told me that I'd be sitting here still talking about the noise from Northland Drying over a year after this all started, I would have told them they were crazy. Our elected officials won't let this continue that long, they would definitely take action to put the residents ahead of this company, wouldn't they? Well, the answer is obviously not, because here we are. I'm currently waiting on data that I requested on September 25th, but I do have some data from September of 2018 to May of 2019. Data that shows there are approximately 120 complaints from 21 different residents, and that is only data from the city. Those numbers do not include complaints made to the Arlington Police Department. Yet, we were told back in May to be patient. We backed off and gave the city time to gather their own data so they could take action against Northland Drying. Although some action was taken by the police department in the form of citations, that did nothing to help with the noise issue, because those citations were dismissed. The citations cannot be written in Northland Drying, they have to be written to a specific person. According to PAD, Josh Howell's name is on county tax statements as the responsible party, so that is who the citations were issued to. Now, Josh says he's not the majority shareholder, so he's not responsible. Thus, citation is dismissed. Due to Northland Drying being an LLC, there's been difficulty finding out who the responsible party is, and no big surprise, Northland Drying will not tell the city. It is quite convenient timing that the noise has gotten so much worse since this whole citation issue. Northland knows that no citation can be written at this time. And yes, citations are deserved for violating the MPCA sound levels. The police department has a calibrated tester that has a plus or minus of two as far as the results. I have been with the police down at Northland Dry and have witnessed the results showing they are over the 50 DVA for nighttime hours. Now, some people, especially Northland Drying, claim that because they're owned industrial, that they don't have to follow the residential 50 DVA numbers. That is false. On page one of the packet I gave you, I outline the paragraph from the MPCA Guide to Noise Control that states, "Noise from an industrial facility near a residential area is held to the MAC-1 standards if it can be heard on a residential property." And I believe we can all agree that the noise is definitely heard on residential property. On page two of the packet, also from the MPCA Guide to Noise Control, I outline the paragraph stating where the testing is to be done, which is at the area of normal outdoor human activity nearest to the noise source. The reason the MPCA set the numbers as they are at the source is that it takes into account how loud it will be farther away and how that affects the areas around the source. Pages three and four refer to the state statutes regarding nuisance. The definition as stated is that anything that is offensive to the senses or interferes with the comfortable enjoyment of life or property is a nuisance. Public nuisance is one that affects a considerable, considerable amount of the public, while private nuisance is on an individual basis. I think we also can say that Northland Drying is guilty of being both a public and a private nuisance. We as residents have the right to enjoy our homes and property per the Minnesota statute, and there is enough evidence to prove that our right to that enjoyment is being violated. Why are the elected officials continuing to ignore that fact? I'm a person who doesn't like taking pills or medicine unless completely necessary, and I'm at the point that I take sleep aids a few times a week. On the nights that I'm not home early enough to take them, I have to sleep in my living room because of the humming in my bedroom. I have a humming in my head for quite some time, even after I leave my house in the morning. I'm constantly tired from either not enough sleep or being drowsy from the sleep aids. I feel edgy, have little patience, and basically out of sorts most days. I've spent quite a bit of money replacing windows, adding insulation, and even replacing old plaster walls, and that hasn't even helped. Most days, I can't even sit outside and enjoy my property because the humming is so aggravating. I know there are many in town that this noise doesn't bother, but that doesn't mean it shouldn't bother me. It would be like me telling you that since nails on a chalkboard don't bother me, that it shouldn't bother you. This is no longer a person's perception of the noise, it's a proven fact that it's bothering many, and Northland Drying is consistently over the state guidelines. I'm asking that you finally take all the documentation you've collected and file for an injunction to shut Northland down, at least during the nighttime hours, and then until they do whatever it takes to fix the noise issue. It's quite obvious that continuing to let their regular employees attempt to do this is not working. It would be like a mechanic telling me how to fix my car, and I do it, but it keeps braking. Obviously, it's because I'm not a professional in that field, and I didn't get it fixed right in the first place. I don't think it's reasonable to continue to give Northland Dry any more time than they've already had, which is over a year. The residents deserve some peace, and our patience has run out. It's our rights that are being violated, and our health that is being affected, and it's time for that to stop. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your input.
Moving on to. I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, if there's no one else, I did receive several phone calls today from individuals. Nathan Kellerman, who I talked to, wanted to express concern with the noise levels. In the phone conversation, he did indicate to me that he felt that the noise was at least as bad, if not worse, than when Northland Dry first came to town. And he expressed concern and wanted the council to take some sort of action to allow him to sleep in his home. I also took a call from Barb Pickholman, and her point of contention was the smell that comes from Northland Dry. Indicated that it wasn't a problem over the summer, because she had the windows closed and the air on, but now as she's opening her windows and trying to get some fresh air in the house, that the smell is just overwhelming. So, I did take those two calls, knowing that this was on the agenda. They were going to try to attend, but asked that I bring this up to the council.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak to the council at this time? Hearing none, we'll move on to item seven announcements.
First item, council members, is the 2019 regional meetings. A number of those are being held throughout Minnesota by the League of Minnesota Cities. Part of the agenda will include discussion about how B is working for economic success throughout the region, talk about the 2020 legislative priorities, and a few, the executive director, Dave Unmack, and League of Minnesota Cities President, Mike Morensen, will also be attending those. The closest one that I believe to Arlington would be October 9th in Benson, so if anybody is interested in attending, please let me know, and we can try and get that scheduled. The second announcement is the Arlington Chamber of Commerce Halloween Fright Night, which will be coming up on Thursday, October 31st. It'll be from 5:30 to 7:00 on Main Street, from Highway 5 to First Avenue. So on both sides of the street, they will have trick-or-treating available. The next item is the Fall Care Event, which is scheduled for Thursday, November 7th, at 2:00, and again at 6:00 at the Arlington Community Center. And the speaker will be Robin Thompson, who is a senior outreach specialist with Minnesota River Area Agency on Aging. She'll be presenting what's new in Medicare for 2020. So again, Thursday, November 7th, 2:00 and 6:00 here at the Arlington Community Center. The last item under announcements this evening is the Ridgeview Sibley Medical Center, has a flu immunization clinic. It's time to go and get your shot. That will be on Wednesday, October 16th, from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM here at the Arlington Community Center.
Okay. Any questions regarding the announcements? Hearing none, we'll move on to communications.
Councilmembers, first item is the report from People Services, our water and wastewater management professionals. As you can see, the first item there, they listed a number of annual maintenance operations that they do. The one that I will point out to you, that they've just started doing is, they have begun exercising water valves. So basically, in the past, they have not gone around and turned the water valves, or maybe multiple years go by that they never once turned it, and so they have started this year establishing a schedule so that they'll go and they'll turn one-third of them each year, which will do a good job of helping us to maintain those, and so that when, we need them, they aren't broken, they aren't leaking, they're having some different issues.
Those are water valves that are usually located front yard, near the curb?
Correct, and the, yep, yep.
Right.
Road there, so that's something new that they'll be doing going forward. They're almost done now with genning, they did the southeast side of the city, so. In addition to that, they have the average daily water that has been pumped. If you look at your charts for August, we were in line with the average daily water pumped in 2018. And then if you take a look at the daily wastewater pumped, in 2019, we were a bit higher than we were in 2018, which is a result of the significant rains that we've had during that time, so.
Looks like we've treated twice as much water as we've pumped.
At least.
Yeah, I think we're looking at 400,000 and 200,000. Okay. Okay. Just one thing, I know that they had indicated they were going to start monitoring the fairgrounds, but I don't see that on this report. I'm just wondering if they've started that as a once, once a month to-do, so to speak?
I will follow up on that. I believe that they are, but I think it should be included on the report.
Yes.
Another thing, I know that you had mentioned that they are finally going to put in the valve by Green Isle, so as soon as they do that, can we get the numbers on that as well?
Yes, yep, yep. Then item B, regarding a lawsuit against city of Arlington?
The second item is, just for your information, I'll invite Attorney Arneson to elaborate on it. Notice of a lawsuit.
I think the council is aware that we had an issue at the cemetery some time ago where the burial plot was perhaps not properly marked, so there was a burial that took place too close to an existing burial, and the city ultimately responded by paying all the cost of having that more recent burial placed in another location. A couple of the members of the family of the deceased have filed a claim against the city, apparently for emotional suffering, and this is being turned over to the league's insurance trust. They will in turn assign this to a law firm to provide a defense to the city. So, just making the city aware of it. It's hard to evaluate this type of suit. I guess my own view of the situation is that the city responded appropriately and actually spent a vast amount of time trying to resolve the situation, which I think the city can demonstrate to the judge if this ever reaches the court level.
Okay, any questions on that? All right, we do have under item nine, maintenance department update. Kirby is not here yet, so he indicated he may, he had a different, he had a commitment somewhere else tonight and felt he needed to attend that, but he thought he might get here a little later than, and still present his report. So, with that on hold, we will move into resolutions, and Resolution 57-2019 would be the first one, that is a resolution ratifying new mayoral appointments and committees. When I put this together, I, you know, my main concern was to get the new individuals on the council plugged into the roles that were vacated by the resignations, and that has been done. And, you know, these, these appointments are done annually, and, you know, actually ratified early January, so if, if there are some committees that current council members are serving on, or currently serving on, and would, would like to try something else or be involved in a different committee, please let me know before the, you know, the end of the year, so that we can take that into consider, into consideration when we make the annual appointments to the city committees. Otherwise, what you have in front of you is the finished product.
I'll introduce Resolution 57-2019, a resolution ratifying new mayoral appointments and committees.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Batchor, seconded by Councilmember Haddelsted, to, was introduced, I should say, Resolution 57-2019, a resolution ratifying new mayoral appointments and committees. And this is, this was done in order to fill the vacancies left by the two resigning city council members. Any questions on the resolution? Hearing none, we will vote by roll call. Councilmember Gilman.
Yes.
Councilmember Haddelsted.
Yes.
Councilmember Batchor.
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan.
Yes.
Councilmember Cowell.
Yes.
Five in favor, none opposed. Resolution is adopted. Resolution 58-2019, a resolution relating to designating polling places and locations for the upcoming elections next year. Do you want to, anything to say on that?
Councilmembers, we have an interesting election year coming up here in 2020, where there'll be a three, general, or I'm sorry, 2019 will have, at the end of this year, we'll have an interesting election, where we'll have three elections. One of the things that has changed with our polling location is that we used to have the township also here at the Arlington Community Center, and they have elected to go mail ballots. So we will no longer have them here, which will be less people, which I have talked with Vicki, and there probably will be some additional staff expenses. This resolution is just a requirement by the state to indicate where those polling places will be in 2020.
Okay.
I'll introduce Resolution 58-2019, a resolution relating to designating polling place locations for all elections in 2020.
Second.
Resolution 58-2019, introduced by Councilmember Cowell, seconded by Councilmember Batchor, and that is a resolution relating to designating polling place locations for all elections in 2020. Any question on the resolution? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call. Councilmember Batchor.
Yes.
Councilmember Cowell.
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan.
Yes.
Councilmember Haddelsted.
Yes.
Councilmember Gilman.
Yes.
Five in favor, none opposed, the resolution is adopted. All right, moving on to new business, update on Northland Drying, and this is a place where the council, I guess if you have an update, Pat, and then the council can discuss what was presented earlier.
I guess I'd like to maybe invite Chief Pedersen, if he would like to come up and give us just kind of a summary of activity. Good evening.
Excuse me, hi. So, where to begin? August 8th, I believe it was, we had a meeting with the, is on? There we go. August 8th, we had a meeting with the attorney who came to represent Northland Dry, and Pat and I sat down and talked with them, and we went over a bunch of our reported noise violations, ordinance violations. We disclosed a nu, a number, all of the complaints that we've had up until August 8th, with the attorney. Since then, the agreement was that when we have a complaint, that we would then contact the plant managers, which would be Dave Burns and Seth, I forget his last name, and let them know that we had a complaint the previous night. So I've been sending them text messages, and then they respond and say, thank you, we'll check and see what has changed. At certain points in the communication, there was some explanations of cracked mufflers, bearings that needed to be changed in the exhaust fans, and some other ongoing issues at the plant. So we've made note of these complaints, we've kept logs of them, and have noticed that the violations have been more consistent, they have been over the 50 threshold at night, and sometimes over the 60 during the day, but then there's also been times where they've been compliant. So it's a back and forth, we don't know what they're doing, we're, we don't know necessarily what's causing the lower readings or the higher readings.
Can I ask a question?
Sure can.
So the six, the, has there been anything during the day?
So the six, the, has there been anything during the day? So you said it was fifty and sixty?
Fifty at night.
Fifty at night.
And then sixty during the day, is what's allowed.
That's what's allowed, but when you've taken the readings.
Oh, they've exceeded that at both times. Yep, yep.
So are you, are you taking it to the standard as far as the time period? There's a lot, there was a lot of talking that was going on when I was trying to read what the standard is. But it, when you do sound tests, you have to, it's like a time weighted average, and then they spell it out, the levels over a one hour monitoring period, and then it talks about ten percent and, or six minutes of the hour, so it's not just a peak. So when you look at a meter, you may, just from our conversation, we could be having, you know, fifty decibels.
Sure.
And you'll see that spike go on, but typically, typically you bring a third party in and they, and they do sound testing. I've done a lot of the semi-work.
Sure.
And then they, they record the whole thing, and they, they give you a report in the end that tells you what, what it actually is, and that would be to the standard.
Yep. So for date wise, I don't have that in front of me, but the city did contract with ESI to come in and do a full test. I think it was paid for by the city and split with Northland at that time?
Paid a hundred percent.
Hundred percent.
By the city the first time.
Preliminary tests.
And then, then E, Northland Drying actually hired ESI to come out and do a secondary test. Again, I don't recall the date on that.
Yeah.
But it is documented, and they were in compliance. So I think they're falling back on, we met the compliance. Since then, we have gone to MPCA, and we have gotten one of their sound devices. And it's a calibrated unit that they taught me how to utilize. So we checked the calibration before, we checked it afterwards, we filled out the forms, and we had the same type of results.
So you sent that in to them?
Yes.
Okay, so that would have been a, so that would have been a documented.
Correct. And then since then, we've had to return that. We kept it a little longer than we probably should have. But we got a lot of dad from that, and that's what we shared with their attorney. So their attorney, the company itself, knows that they are in violation. They've been continuing to try and rectify some of the noise. So therefore, we've been, the last couple of months, trying to open communication with them again and be as transparent, I guess, as we possibly can with the complaints that we're getting, and allowing them to try and move forward and make some type of changes. Simply, we're not seeing any changes.
Yeah.
They cut holes in the roof to open more ventilation, and I, I'm not an engineer, but I believe when that happened, that allowed more airflow to come in through the building, which then allowed the fan and the vent to push out more air, causing more noise. It's just a guess.
Yeah.
We've had a lot of sit-down discussions with the council. We've had a sit-down with the attorney. I've gone over with their attorney and showed them the exact houses that the noise is louder at, which is our complaining, reporting parties complaining, are concerned citizens. There are certain areas in town where the noise seems louder, because it seems to reflect off the large Seneca Building. That huge tin wall that is on the west side of the railroad tracks, I think it just reverberates through there. So I guess that's kind of where we're at. We did have some recent complaints again over the weekend. Those readings were in excess of the MPCA.
Unit.
Correct. And that unit is not, it's calibrated, it's certified, but it's not calibrated to the standards of MPCA.
Provide the, it won't provide the standard. It's gonna give you an instantaneous result.
We try to do a, you know, there's times where I've done an hour long, two hour long reading. It's still in violation. But I don't have the ability to calibrate it before and calibrate it afterwards, because the MPCA has the calibration device. We did not buy one of those, they're very expensive. And then you also have to keep up with the calibration of the calibration device and have that certified as well. So we've been doing our best with what we have, and we're seeing standards that are, or readings that are in excess of what they should be.
Needless to say, there's been a significant amount of time between administration, between law enforcement, to try and address this issue with residents frequently calling, inquiring, and sharing a lot of their concerns about it, so.
So what I heard as a request from Lisa, I'm sorry, I didn't get your last name, but the, what I heard how loud was, you know, doing something for the nighttime. I, I, I'm a facility manager at a, at a manufacturing plant, and, you know, the thought of shutting a place down seems, you know, out of Rome, but I, from what I'm seeing and hearing, it, it sounds like there's not much choice. Is that something that can be done, and how, you know, as far as nighttime and what hours would that, and what hours would, would be put in place, proposal or something?
Well, that was something that was discussed and proposed to Northland quite a while ago. Response was that they have to run twenty-four hours a day for the operation to be profitable. If they shut down for the night shift, the operation wouldn't cash flow. They'd have to shut down the plant completely. Now, that was their response. As far as legal action, the city has the ability to bring what's called an abatement action. But in those situations, the court typically doesn't have the leeway to say, you know, we're gonna enjoin the operation from, operating from such and such to such and such a time. It's basically a all or nothing approach. If the court grants an abatement injunction, it basically shuts the plant down, period. We've discussed that possibility with Northland, expressing to them our frustrations that, again, we seem to take a step forward and then we take a step back. And we're kind of where we were many months ago. And we need some kind of long-term resolution. And if we can't get that, that, you know, our last resort is to seek an abatement order from the court, which would basically shut the plant down, which would presumably cause them to move out of town.
So do they own the building?
Yes. To bring you further up to date, we've had recent discussions, and Chief has, by the way, been doing an, just an excellent job. He kind of, I think accidentally volunteered to get in the middle of all this, but has become somewhat of an enforcement expert, taking the lead for the city on this matter. I've had recent discussions with Northland Drying's attorneys and have raised this possibility of an abatement action again. And their comeback, which I think I shared with the council in a recent email, is that they also wanted to get to some long-term resolution, not only because of the past issues, but they were apparently considering a major expansion in the operation. And they offhandedly said in the millions of dollars, but if they feel that they can't get a handle on the noise violations, then they realize that sooner or later, the city's gonna have to take action. And they don't want to put an expansion into Arlington if eventually it will result in legal action and possibly shutting the plant down. So they are very concerned about that. And rather than expanding in Arlington, if they feel they can't get a handle on the problems, they may just pull up stakes and move somewhere else. The city, I think, does not want to lose a business, they don't want to lose those jobs. But on the other hand, the city is responsible to enforce the laws. These are state regulations regarding noise levels, and the city has no power, even if it wanted to, to override those state regulations. Northland Drying's most recent, and by recent, I mean the last few days, proposal, I should say their attorney's recommendation in Northland Drying, is that they bring ESI back in to do a, an extensive study to determine what the recurring noise problem sources are, what possible fixes there may be. And then if they come up with some good ideas, to present those to the city council with a plan of action and deadline dates for completing those actions, with the idea that, you know, they would be in compliance in the future, and everyone's goals will be reached. Northland's dry, Northland Drying's board is considering those recommendations now. I, I told their attorneys, we're not gonna wait forever to hear a response. We want a pretty quick response, and we want it to be in detail. And so their attorneys promised they would push that as much as they could. I got a confirming email this afternoon from Northland Drying's corporate attorney to that effect. Is this gonna solve the issues? I don't know. But I think it's, if Northland Drying's board or the corporation that owns Northland Drying, they're apparently a subsidiary of another corporation, if they give a green light to this fairly quickly, I guess then the council will have something to consider. And if it looks like it's reasonable, and is backed up by ESI's expert opinion that, you know, here's the sources of the problem, here are the fixes, and then Northland Drying commits to attempt those fixes, I guess then it's up to the council to decide if that's a reasonable approach. And then we wait and see if they perform those fixes within the scheduled timeframe, and then see what the result is. And I guess it's my recommendation to the council to give them a little more time to respond accordingly. I think they do have the idea that something's gonna have to happen real soon now. I think we definitely have their attention. The only other alternative, I think, at this point is, you know, to seek a court abatement action, which is, it's basically a death sentence to the business, so.
How long a process is that?
How long a process? Well, probably several months if they fight it, and they probably would fight it.
So, I mean, I mean, is that something that could be done kind of hand in hand?
Well.
Where, you know, the process is started, and we could probably cancel it at any time, I'm sure.
Well, I guess tactically, I'd, I'd prefer that we wait, if they give us a quick response, to wait for that. Because bringing in abatement action, we're kind of drawing the battle lines. And I could see them thinking, well, okay, cities bring us to court, let, let's try our luck in court. And in abatement action, you know, the, the burden is on the city to prove that they're not in compliance. And if they bring in ESI again and take some tests, and, you know, it's possible they could be on good behavior somehow, that's ascribing to them bad motives, that they are somehow in control of this, you know, and I'm not sure if that's the case or not, but anyway, you know, they can fight us in court. And if the court denies the abatement action, we lose, at least for a period of time, our most effective enforcement lever.
What about the option of forcing the engineering study from the, whether it was, I don't remember the name of the company.
ESI.
ESI.
Well, that's part of the proposal that they're presenting to their board, that they would bring ESI back in at their cost.
No, I'm saying, like, can we basically do a legal document that, that states, you know, go down this path by this date, you know, actions, you know, we're giving you one month to, to show improvement? Or basically, there's no choice but to go the other route?
Well, that's, that's what they, their attorneys were recommending, that Northland do. Again, ESI study, plan of action, timeline.
Yeah, but I'm saying, the city present that to them, not, not as much.
With a deadline?
With a deadline, in writing.
We've already been down that road.
Yeah.
We've already been down that road, and it did not work. I mean, it didn't work. They drug it all the way out to the deadline before they got ESI back.
Deadline.
Well, it wasn't, ended up being past the deadline. So, I mean, I, I honestly, I don't know, and now they have their attorneys involved. It's costing the city more and more money, more and more of the police department's time, more and more of Ross's time, more of our time. And it's.
And people not being able to sleep.
I don't, right. And it, and it doesn't get better, and it's been getting worse.
Could we, is it possible, and I'm not even, I, I came in here with my mind made up what I wanted to do tonight, and it's something Northland Drying is not going to like, and I don't know that I can even change my mind. But, 'cause I don't wanna chase the business out of town, but they've had opportunity after opportunity after opportunity to address this, and we are no further ahead than we were the day they came to town. My question is, if they came back to a proposal to us that they would get ESI, they would pay the cost, they would do the testing, correct the actions, can we at the same time request that if we extend that, we can require them to not run at night from ten till six so the residents could sleep? 'Cause I would be willing to go along with that.
Yeah, it's an interesting idea.
I mean, if they're, if they tr, and I understand it would cut down some of their production, but this stuff has to stop, it really has to stop. And if we just say, yeah, let's do it, we're back in the same thing we've been doing for the last, what?
Year and a half.
Year and a half, and we're getting nowhere. And I, I don't even know what to say to residents anymore when they ask me, other than, yeah, I guess we're a bunch of clowns. 'Cause that's really what I feel like.
Well, and it sounds like, did you mention that they had, they talked about a million dollar expansion, something like that? And it sounds like they're dangling that in front of us.
That's what I feel like.
Just dragged us along even further.
Well, yeah, that, that, that's, you know, something that occurred to me as well. But by the same token, they said that they wanna resolve this, and if they feel they can't, they know that sooner or later, the city's gonna take action, which means they don't want to put an improvement here, and, you know, just move somewhere else. Which would solve, which would solve the nuisance problem, but, you know, again, it deprives us of the business, so.
Two or three people, that's it.
So it's, they're not a major employer of local, local people?
I don't wanna see anybody lose their job.
No, of course not, of course not.
When we're disrupting ten times the amount of people in town that there are people employed there, we have a problem, a serious problem.
Absolutely.
I'll just mention one thing that I know Cynthia Smith-Strat brought up when we were, you know, at this point earlier. They do have a conditional use permit for the storage bins that they have located outside of the facility. I assume that they are using those. And if they are, part of the conditional use permit is with the requirement that they abide by all the city ordinances, et cetera. That was something that we had scheduled a public hearing for. If we found, and this happened just as they came in at the last minute with the noise testing, showing that they're within the allowable limits, that then we decided not to take away their outdoor storage conditional use permit. Could removal of that, would that be significant enough to cause them?
Well, that would shut them down.
Okay, it would shut them down, not probably for a year, but until we were to approve that you have met our requirements of getting the noise issue under con, control. That would be something that would be less severe than.
Could we pull that with all court action?
Well, but I mean, I think.
Yes, I believe that you can have a public hearing, and it's up to the council to make that decision.
But with that being said, okay, so you pull their, their CUP done. That means they can't run. That means they can't figure out why it's loud. That means they can't bring in ESI. It pretty much shuts them down, period.
We close their, we close any opportunity they have.
Absolutely, so I mean, I, if there is a way that it can be nighttime shutdown, daytime run, and they do what they say that they're gonna do, what you mentioned, and. and then, then I'm all for that, but if not, I mean, I'm done.
Especially if there are other options and then it could be brought up to them too, that we could take their conditional use permit without court action and take to get the nighttime hours.
Is, is there a way that we can get the nighttime hours to cease until they... Is there any way that we can do that, Ross?
Oh, I, I don't think there's a legal avenue to tell a business what shifts it can run. Oh, no.
But if they wanna play ball with us-
They can certainly do it voluntarily.
I mean, not to, point blank, I mean, it's either, if you wanna do what you wanna do, then maybe the city would consider a thirty or sixty day delay. But I would only do that with the condition that there will be no nighttime. If they don't agree to that, then we go through the abatement and we shut them down. I'm, that's really where I'm at. I don't know if I could vote anything different.
And can't you use that conditional use permit and just say, we know that you are in violation of the nighttime limits? And just say, for you to retain this conditional use permit, we are requiring you to shut down during the nighttime until you can prove to us that you, I mean, would that-
Follow the steps that they had mentioned that they're gonna do, with the timeline that-
If they truly want to be in Arlington, if I'm them and I truly wanna be here and I truly wanna expand, I wanna be a neighbor and all that, I would think then, well, if my options are, we have a facility here, we have two options. The city could go through the abatement and close us. We could fight it, but we might lose it. But if we do go through what they want, and I understand they're gonna lose some production, they still have hope that this could be worked out. I would think that they would be interested in that, over just abatement and it's all over, or a court battle.
I would like them to figure it out and be under.
Well, I would like for them to figure it out and be under too. I don't wanna chase them outta town. But we just aren't getting anywhere with these people. We're getting, and it's the, John and I talked today, I said, it's all hours the police department's working, it's the hours Ross, that you're working, the cost to the city, the residents not sleeping. I know one of them, they dr- she was driving to Gaylord to sleep at night. I mean, the complaints up at Brow Motors, all the stuff on the car, it just goes on and on and on as time goes by. If we were seeing a thirty, forty, fifty percent increase in compliance or them trying to work with us, I'd be all for this, but I'm not seeing that. I just, I don't know where it is. It's a tough deal, but...
Well, if the council wishes, what I can do is put together a proposed email response and I can distribute it out for comments. And if it looks good, I'll shoot it off to their attorneys. Again, I've tried my best to express to them the city's feel of urgency on this. But, you know, it certainly wouldn't hurt to light a few more fires under them so that their, you know, their attorneys can pass that on to Northland's board. So, you know, we, we get quick response.
So, if the conditional use permit is, is voided, how, you know, what really stops them from, from running? Like, who's gonna come up and say, you can't have something in that tank? I mean-
Who's gonna enforce it?
Who's gonna enforce that?
I would assume who, whether the-
'Cause it, is it, uh, MPCA or?
No, it'd be a, it'd be a violation of the zoning ordinance.
Police department.
Can I, can I just, I don't wanna interrupt, but you're talking about the conditional use permit. I've been told they're not using any outdoor bins anyway. When they dump those potatoes, they're, they get dumped directly into the building. They're not using any outstore- outdoor storage bins for those anyway. And I've been told their finished product is inside the building. So, if you're falling back on that conditional use permit, if they're not using those outdoor storage bins anyway, I don't know how much that will help.
Yeah, we aren't gonna shut them down, yeah.
So, so, and probably the most frustrating thing for everybody is, no matter which option happens, it's months.
Right.
That's the same. But, but the only thing is, I, I really think if they want to be here and we tell them, we will work with you, once you have your plan put together, ESI, whatever their plan may be, you need to also shut down at night. If they're willing to do that, at least we've taken care of the noise while they work on it. We give them whatever amount of time there is, the residents can sleep, we don't have those problems. And at the end of that time period, if it's not resolved, it's abatement and it's over with. That's cut and dried.
So, would you're proposing, council member Adelstad, is that during their process of trying to rectify the situation, that they would have no nighttime operation?
I would make a motion to that effect, if you would like me to.
I would second that motion.
I will make a motion that we give Northland Drying, after Attorney Arneson talks to them a week, ten days to respond with their proposal and that we let them know that in, if we go along with that proposal, that they're going to have to shut down from ten thirty at night till six thirty in the morning so the residents can sleep. And the time period, I guess we'll have to wait and see what they propose. If it doesn't happen, then it's abatement. That's my motion.
Second.
That gives them at least the opportunity to try to resolve the problem. And it gives the residents an opportunity to sleep.
So, from what I heard from the, if it's okay if I talk now?
Yes, please, go ahead.
From what I heard from the, the initial testing that was done by the outside source, they were compliant. So, either they were not running or they were running not full, not fully. Now, how, how do you actually, you know, to say they don't run? And I, fortunately, when you get attorneys involved, and I mean that out of all the best respect that I can, you know, their attorney is trying to stand up for their, their customer and knows the ins and outs that they feel that's, that's best for their client. And there's not a relationship being formed with the city. You know, it's not Pat or, or Officer, uh, building, building some sort of relationship to, to where they don't want to, you know, upset the community and reputation that they have.
We've had Josh here in the council meetings saying he wants to be a good neighbor and all this, but the good neighbor stuff never happens.
We had the same thing with, with ESI coming in for the second time, them giving them a, a an outline or whatever, what they should be doing, what they should do to get this noise underneath control. And, you know, constantly pushing the limits as far as deadlines, or not doing the work at all, or doing what they think instead of having an engineer come in and tell them what they actually should be doing.
Doing work without permit.
Doing, doing work without per- doing the least that they possibly can and not hitting our deadlines. And I guess that's where I find my frustration too, is that I feel like if we don't do anything or if we, you know, just wait and see, or if we don't put our feet down now, it's just gonna continue.
Well, and it sounds like they've been given so many opportunities. If they, I mean, they're not demonstrating they really want to be a good neighbor in this community. I mean, it does not sound like they're making a good bait effort to do that.
That's the battle we've had for the last over one year. It always comes up and it's, I, and I really think, like I said, if, if they wanna be here, this is what you have to do. We didn't present the problem, they did.
Well, one comeback I think they will make is that they've made changes in the factory. We've never seen any invoices, but their claim is that they've put hundreds of thousands of dollars into trying to correct the noise issue and other issues. We know that they've done some work in the plant. What the cost of it is, again, we've seen no invoices.
Well, we've seen no pulled per- pulled permits either for the work that they've done.
That's another issue. But the, our building inspector indicates they're being a little more cooperative now. But most recently, and this was like two weeks ago, their attorney Pat put a ninety degree elbow in their smokestack pointing south, thinking that might, you know, take care of part of the noise problem. But I'm not aware if they've done that yet?
Yes.
They have? Okay. Does that seem to have made any difference?
Did they pull a permit for it? Well, I mean-
Just to turn the smokestack.
The thing about it is, is if we were to pass the motion I made and we see that they're making progress and it is getting quieter, to the point the residents can sleep, we can always pull that out and say, okay, you can run till 1:00 AM or something, or give them some leeway. We can be easy with that, as long as we can see that there's progress being made. And this is our trump card. We don't have any other trump cards. This is our opportunity to tell them, hey, boys, we mean business. We aren't gonna let this go on our residents any longer. The ball's in your field. What do you wanna do?
I'd like that, but, so how do you measure it moving forward to assure that, you know, the noise isn't?
We would, they would have to pay ESI to come out and run tests, but the only thing I would like to see on that and drawn up in that agreement is that they do not get notified when ESI is coming. Because then, then there's always the squabble about, did they have variable speed motors? Could they crank it up at night? No, they say they don't. Some say they can. Okay, if they don't know when ESI comes out here, we'd have to draw it up that the city would be the ones that will call for them to come in when they felt there was an opportunity. If they, they say, hey, we think we got it. Okay, we'll have ESI come out, but we're not going to tell them when that is.
The other piece of that is that, chief, you could probably get that equipment again from the MMPA, right, or MMPI?
MPCA.
MPCA.
And then we have certified equipment to check it. I would be fine with that, because then we know. And if they've made great strides and they're down to forty-six or forty-five, say, okay, well, keep making new stuff and maybe you can start running at night again.
And consistently.
And that's being fair. I think that's being more than fair to them.
Okay, we have a motion. I don't know if, did you really get it written down or you want me to take a swing at it or? It was wordy. I shortened it. Let me take a, I maybe missed something, but let me know if I did. Effective immediately and during period of testing to seek compliance, the council hereby requests, that's too soft, demands no operation of facility between the hours of ten thirty PM to six thirty AM. Get it all?
And that would be in a proposal sent to Northland Drying with allowing them seven to ten days to respond to Attorney Arneson?
Yeah, I, I still want them to have the opportunity to come together and have a plan to possibly operate in Arlington. But I want them to know that in the meantime, they're not gonna upset the residents any longer. And as we move forward, if we think it's looking good, we can run those tests and we can move forward from there.
But that wouldn't be a proposal. I mean, we're literally saying-
We're saying this is-
This is what's happening.
Yeah, okay.
A proposal is like, hey, look at this.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
It needs to be, this is-
This is the council's decision.
It's not even an ultimatum. This is, yeah, this is an enforcement that we're-
And I guess the question that I would have is, how can we enforce it?
Well, it's the propos- it's actually a proposal because we're proposing this to them. If they wanna voluntarily go along with the proposal and if they choose not to, then I guess our next step would be-
There'd be abatement. If they say, no, we will not do that, then we go the abatement process. At least we can say we gave them the opportunity to be able to solve. They've already had plenty of opportunities, as far as I'm concerned. But we're giving them one opportunity more, but we're gonna eliminate the hassle to the residents.
Then I would, I would cut the timeframe down. I don't think they need seven days.
Well, I'm just, I wanna give them-
Make a decision.
Give them three to five days to make a decision. And I'm guessing they're gonna snap at it.
That's what I think too.
Or they're, or they're gonna magically come up with a proposal. I don't think you gotta drag it out that long. I mean, if somebody were to come to my work and do that, oh my, yeah, we'd be-
You'd be all over it.
Well, we wouldn't have got to this level.
Yeah. Ross, do you think that I can change my motion to five days? Are we squeezing them too hard or?
Well, you know, it's hard to determine because, again, they're continuing to refuse to tell us exactly who is the final decision maker. All I know is that the guy that we've always been dealing with, Josh, is a minority shareholder in Northland Drying, which in turn is owned by apparently another corporation. And that's not the kind of thing that I, I can check on in the state secretary of state's office. I mean, they don't, they don't have those direct records there that this corporation owns this corporation. And I've told their attorneys, we wanna know who we're dealing with. And their attorney's response has been, well, you know, these corporate shareholders don't necessarily want, you know, to be involved in this.
Abatement.
Yeah.
Give them five days then.
Five days to respond. If they don't and they don't wanna share their names, then they are not interested in coming and staying in Arlington. If they can't give the owner's name so we can work this out, abate them and be done with them.
And five days to respond to what? To Attorney Arneson's?
Yes.
Email that you'll be putting together. Okay. All right, I've read the motion as close as I can interpret it. Is there any questions about it? You'll be voting on it? Okay, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried unanimously. All right, anything else on, uh, updates for Northland Drying?
Thanks, John.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Uh, if those of you that were in attendance can sign the slip that's around or such, a clipboard with a piece of paper on it, just showing that you were here, that'd be great. Okay, thank you. And if there is no other input on that, Mr. Wickworth, I would like you to come and update us on the maintenance.
He's signing in.
He's signing in, yeah. You don't have to put your email against us.
It's called Ida Pro Solutions in Wisconsin, just so you know.
Ida Pro Solutions?
What is?
Ida Pro Solutions.
Thank you.
Oh, that's the parent company for the corporation that owns, okay?
I'm guessing she would know.
She, she really did a good job presenting the process she has.
I think so too.
This is, just so you know, probably the fourth time she's been here.
More than that.
Or maybe-
Yeah, just day one here and-
Yeah, no, I just wanted to let you know, I know you got caught up in the middle of a year and a half long thing here. It is hard.
It's been quite the battle.
All right, good evening, Kirby.
Good evening.
Fill us in.
Okay, so, it's the last time I was here, September, middle of September. Just an update of what we've gotten at. Up to this point, we, we fixed, cracked and plugged fairgrounds entrance. That got done today. Uh, they had, there was a collapsed pipe, storm pipe that you guys, uh, kinda had an emergency. Let's get that through and get it fixed. Thank goodness. So, they got that fixed today.
In your opinion, was that significant enough to cause problems for the downwind?
Yeah, big time.
No doubt about it, huh?
Big time, yeah. And that's, that's why behind Good Sam's had not drained a day after our last big rain.
Right.
'Cause that's all supposed to flow back out through the fairground entrance there. There's a catch basin over by Good Sam's.
Right.
On the other side of the fence in the fairgrounds.
And it goes towards the entrance of the fairgrounds?
It all runs, yep, that entire area.
Okay.
Big grass, Park One area, everything runs back over to Chandler. And that pipe was, was, well, it was cracked and then it filled in with road material, so.
Wow.
Kirby, I know there was some unknown as far as the cost. I mean, was it, I mean, well-
No, you've got-
Well, I mean, we had the cost, but there was maybe some unknown as whether they'd find more or was worse than what they thought it would be.
No, it was, it was what we, what we planned on.
No surprises.
Yeah.
We love surprises.
That was refreshing, for sure. Uh, coordinated with Trugreen on fertilizing and weed spraying. Coordinated with TruGreen on fertilizing and weed spraying our parks and our properties, so that, that is finished. We had some rain days to get some oil changes and equipment repair and maintenance done in the shop. Gave the shop a nice needed bath and cleaning. We've been filling in some potholes in the road with cold patch and, and some bigger cracks and some spots where the utilities stick up that we patch around so the plows don't hit those and bust them up. Snow tires are currently being put on our snow blower at McQueen. It's been there for a couple of weeks now. I hope they hear back soon. I might have to call and get an update, as long as we get that back in a timely manner, make me feel better. Had a safety meeting in Stewart with MMUA. We replaced the door on our tractor, took up some of our time. Used up remaining street paint, painted, I'm guessing, half the town, fire hydrants, and then it ran out of paint. We'll have to wait till next year to finish them up. We sealed, I sealed some joints and some seams and some screws on the police department roof. And so far, I've heard it's not leaking anymore, which I hope that fixed the problem, but it seems like the roof leaks when we get those sideways, sideways rains. So it's kinda difficult to know exactly where it's getting in, but we'll keep an eye on that. Burned the brush pile last week. Contracted some curb work and some hot patch work around catch basins. Helped with the homecoming parade, put barricades up. We did some street, street sweeping already. Had parks meeting, community center meeting, FEMA meeting. I got all the FEMA paperwork organized last week, including all the bids, coordinates of each spot. We had almost thirty spots, or thirty items of damage related to this spring when we had terrible frost boils and stuff like that, which is a lot. We really got hit hard, actually, compared to a lot of other towns. So I got all that done. I got that into our representative with FEMA last Friday. We have upwards of seventy thousand dollars that we had to spend on repairing. And I think, Pat, if I'm not wrong, we're, it is a hundred percent covered, right? Seventy-five by FEMA and twenty-five by the state, from what I understood.
That's good.
That's very good.
But with an asterisk. This is a all-out effort to try to get that money. They can't guarantee it, but we're sure hoping it, they pull through for us, so.
It's under, was it a hundred thousand? We can do the expedited.
Right, yeah, which we are.
Yep.
So there's an expedited, there's a quicker process that we qualify for to get our money back to us. So we'll continue on working with that. And that, there's been some community center work, just minor repairs and maintenance. Took care of some graffiti at Frenzel Park. Just what's coming ahead. Leaves as they continue to fall, are waiting for that to kinda kick in better to start sweeping. We'll start winterizing our parks, dress up our alleys before it freezes to get those nice and smooth for plowing. And just minor repairs in parks and buildings yet this fall while the weather's decent. And then probably towards the end of the month, we'll start getting our winter equipment ready to go, so. Depending on weather, hopefully not sooner. And then I have a street light replacement, question mark. So hopefully that's coming to, yep.
Is the street over by Highland Commons, has that been fixed now?
That, that's done, yeah.
Yep. Turned out well? I mean, did they?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Good.
Did last year, did we get all, when Harlan Dazzle time comes, the lights that go from building to building across the street, did we get all that repaired?
There's one strand that never got put back up.
The connectors that go into the buildings?
Oh, yeah.
Are we good for this year for that?
Yes, yeah.
Everything's ready to rock?
Yep. Yep.
I just thought I'd bring it up while it's still manageable weather-wise to repair.
Yeah, no, I asked to check, they were-
December tenth is, we don't wanna be doing it.
Nope.
Kirby, is there, I know you've been going back and forth with dates for Arbor Day.
Tree planting, that's right, yeah, I should mention that. It was gonna be this Friday, but now Friday looks like really bad weather, so. I'm waiting here back from the school now again, what dates work for them, so. Hopefully by next week's end, we have our trees planted.
That would be good to-
To finish up our tree grant that we have had for five years, so. Yep.
Okay, any questions for?
How often do you paint the fire hydrants?
Never since I've been here. We painted, when I had my third part-time help, she did, I don't, I don't know, maybe a quarter of them, something like that. But no, I, I don't know. I don't think there's a schedule for it. It shouldn't be done.
Well, I, I heard you mention that you were doing that or whatever, and I just thought that that might be a good, easy project for maybe some youth groups or something like that, that needs some community service hours.
Yep.
Instead of, instead of taking time-
Like the school or something?
That, or there's other groups that potentially, I would imagine-
Can we get sentenced to service people for that?
I don't know, is that a thing anymore?
I bark up that tree all the time and it's, they're always too busy.
Always fun? They're, they're doing full jobs?
Yeah, especially this summer, they had something going where they were pretty much tied up.
I painted last fall, cause I painted my hydrant. Well, I'm trying to think how many years ago. I just went down and got the paint and did it.
Yeah, it's nice if people, it's nice if people would do that, but.
It's gotta be at least ten, twelve years ago, so I mean, that paint does last, cause mine's still, I think, looks fantastic.
Yeah, it seems to. I mean, some look good, then there's some that really look like it's been thirty years.
It takes a wire brush and, it's a thirty-minute job, is all it is. I know you can't expect the residents to do it.
Could start and adopt this hydrant.
Oh.
There we go. Be popular with dogs. All right, anything else for Kirby?
Can get finished up, cause I feel like it's a project that-
I can give you some ideas of groups. I know up in Sartell, they have the Girl Scouts doing like one of their projects on it. So, but I mean, there's other groups in town, like youth groups that need service project hours. They're always looking for kids to volunteer.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions for, for Kirby? If not, thank you very much.
You're doing well.
Okay, moving on to new business, item twelve, approve or deny upgrade to Medisys control system.
Council members, this is the software system that allows Lisa Tech to control HVAC systems in the community center here. We've encountered some problems and for a period of time had limited control. She did talk with Techstar and they rigged something together so that she is able to control, but it's kind of a short-term solution, so. As you can see, there was a quote on this about five years ago for one thousand six hundred fifty-two dollars. The cost now to upgrade would be three thousand seven hundred dollars. And basically, it's taking the software system that is currently on Lisa's computer and putting that into the cloud and being able to access a more, more compatible system that'll work with the computers, so.
That takes care of all our problems.
That takes care of the problems.
And we're updated to as current as we can be.
Correct.
And if it's in the cloud, is it more consistently updated, or is it something that's gonna be a reoccurring cost?
I believe that they will be continuously updating that.
So it's a software, not a license?
I believe it is a-
I don't know if I like anything with Johnson Controls.
I know. For that reason, I did last minute ask, ask Ross to take a look at it, make sure it was legit and not another lighting problem, so.
So sometimes they have service agreements that are required with these. Any idea if that's the case, or?
There's no service agreement in the contract. There's a one-year warranty on the equipment and, or programming or whatever it is. I did have one question. Very first paragraph, it says, provide some operator instructions on the new launcher and how to access Medisys. It's kind of a vague statement. Does Lisa or anybody have a handle on, you know, how much training she needs?
That is an excellent question. I guess I don't know. She's been using the existing system. Obviously, this will be an upgrade. Will probably be different.
Does existing not function?
Yeah, for a while there, it was down where we had no control over the, the climate control in this facility.
This facility here?
Correct, just, just the community, yep, with the three different meeting rooms that we have.
And she controls that from her office, from a phone?
From her, from her office computer. She's able to control that. That includes controlling in the council chambers here, different things like that.
Does, in the contract, Ross, it doesn't say two hours, four hours, six hours. Can we add that in there?
Typically, when they come out, they'll install it and they'll show you.
You get five minutes.
Maybe a little bit longer, half hour, forty-five minutes, and then you're really, you just have to play around.
Then we have to hope Lisa picks up on it.
Yeah, you just have to play around.
Until you get it.
Yep. There's gotta be a number, though, that she can call as far as like the software itself.
Technical line or something.
If she runs across something that she doesn't understand, that she can call and reach out to somebody.
I'm sure.
I would imagine.
Typically, there's a vendor who's dealing, you know, with Lisa in terms of, you know, helping her out with some of these issues, and I believe that he or she is willing to put in the time to answer any questions that she would have on how to operate it, so. I would be confident that, that she can work with that vendor to make sure that she's got a good grasp of how to operate the system.
And so this system is, is operated entirely through the computer? There's no manual backup for this? And, you know, what if, what if there's some system failure or something? What happens then?
Well, just, I, I guess, just like what happened, we don't have access to cooling and heating. You know, fortunately, it was at a time when we didn't have significant highs or significant lows. And so we were able to kind of, you know, make it through those, those several days. And then working with, like I said, Techstar, they were able to go back and, and work with some computer stuff to get, get her access, but it's only a temporary solution of what they've been able to do.
So, so does she, does she physically go in there and plan out for the week for events that are happening and change temperature settings to, to be more energy efficient?
If, if people aren't using the rooms, it will be cooler in the community center here. If people are in the rooms or have events, then she'll be turning heat or cooling on.
According to the schedule.
Yep, just to make the, you know, whatever event or whatever, just to make the environment more pleasant.
So is there manual operation of it, though, just in case, what Laura brought up, if, if there's a-
I know down by Kurt and John there, there's, on the wall, there's a thermostat. I don't know if there is any such thing in the larger rooms. I think one of your challenges would be there, that you would have individuals, you know, adjusting that you don't necessarily want from the public there.
This is somewhat under control here.
I'll make a motion to approve upgrade to Medisys control system from Johnson Controls at a cost of thirty-six ninety-six ninety-three with money from fund forty-five zero 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 dash four oh one, repairs and maintenance building.
And just, I suppose it should be second.
Second.
Is there second? Okay.
Go ahead.
That is a, an account that as of today, we've spent about eight hundred ninety dollars. It's a building account. We have a budget there of five thousand dollars, so. As of right now, it's currently in that line item, so that's the suggestion to take the money from that, repairs, maintenance, building account.
Okay, motion was made by Councilmember Cowell, seconded by Councilmember Haddelstedt, to approve the upgrade to Medisys control system from Johnson Controls at a cost of three thousand six hundred ninety-six dollars ninety-three cents, with money coming from the repairs and maintenance fund, which is dealing with repairs and maintenance of the buildings. Is there more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close is no. Motion carried. Cowell and Haddelstedt. All right, item thirteen, approve or deny a contract with Amy Newsom for a community development director position?
I'm handing out, handing out a copy with just a few minor positions.
Thank you. Now, was there not also a copy in our packet?
There was. However, there were a few changes.
Okay.
Changes to that. That were made since that time. And I'll just give you a very quick summary of what those are. The first one is just the position title being Community Development Director. In some discussions with Councilmember Batchor and Amy Newsom, we had some discussions and felt that was an appropriate title for the position. Also, if you look on that first page, look down to three A. Basically, there were some minor changes made in that the city policy allows for an annual leave, whereas in the past, we had a vacation and a sick leave policy. So looking at those changes as well. Basically, under our annual leave policy, individuals hired within a year or two receive an annual crew of eighty-four hours after they pass their probation. And then they get four hours per pay period, so. Basically, we've tried to kinda break it up, so that is currently within our policy that we have. So those were the only changes. There are no changes made to page two. It was just removal of sick, sick leave, otherwise, so that was the extent of the changes made to the contract that Attorney Arneson drafted. Amy Newsom has had an opportunity to review this and is in agreement with that.
Okay, item one, first couple lines that needs to be changed also to be in, in agreement with the title of the document. And that is employment role rendered full-time professional services city in capacity of
Community Development.
Community Development Director.
Does this position start with vacation, or is it only a reoccur?
This person will have a ten, basically ten days of leave available. And then after they get through their probation, those ten days will be subtracted from what they would have to start out with.
With their name.
So they're being advanced ten days
Ten days, okay.
When they first start.
Yeah.
But then it's being taken from that initial allocation if they use it.
On paragraph three C, down at the bottom, you still have a sick leave on there, you might want to scratch that out.
Cause it's PTO now.
For any unused leave and just scratch sick. Thank you, yep.
Was, was this figured into the budget?
Is this position figured in? I'll let Pat answer, but I believe so, yes.
A, a portion, there is a, a percent of the cost above and beyond what? We, we basically took the three positions of Annie's position, the amount that we were paying, paying for the contract, EDA Director and the contract Planning and Zoning Director. Came up with a total there and it's still required an additional sum of money. I believe when you add in the schooling and it was probably around ten thousand dollars. Michelle and Tom, does that sound right?
Yeah, and the six thousand was, she needs, she has her master's, but she needs a little extra as far as the planning and zoning. So the city of Arlington will pay that fee for her to do that in the, I believe, evening classes. But if she's, within five years, leaves, did we prorate that, or she just has to pay backs? If she leaves a year later, she has to pay the balance of all that money back?
Prorated.
It's prorated by month.
So we've invested some into her, but the condition is she has to stay a minimum of five years to be free and clear of that. She leaves earlier, she has to reimburse the city, prorated amount.
So I, I guess I have a lot of questions. I mean, this was brought up last year. We turned it down pretty quickly because of the administration workload. And I don't know, has that changed?
So I think this position, what happens, from what we've figured out, is we're taking a big portion of what Annie's job was, when that job was, when the Community Center Coordinator position was created. It was a twenty, twenty-five hour a week position, and that's what we're assuming that it is right now. So it's pretty much halftime. Right now, we're paying for planning and zoning and EDA pretty much the other half of the time, twenty hours a week.
And, okay, the minutes.
Yeah, so we're taking away from Annie's position as well, the planning and zoning minutes, EDA minutes, anything and everything to do with the Community Center.
Permits?
Huh?
Is she doing the permits also? Or land use permits?
We have to work through exact, there's still like technical little things, how the workflow is gonna go, what can actually go all towards her way. We're hoping to, to see the land use, building permits, if they filter through her or whatever, so that the office doesn't have to take care of that. What are the other things that were, oh, the city sign?
Internet, internet.
Yep, the web, all the PR that's going on through Facebook and, and anything like that. She's gonna be, the webs, website, that was the other thing that was huge.
The website, yep, she's gonna do the website.
She's done a lot of website work. So she was willing to take on the website as well to update that. That needs major updating. And from what we've heard from Laura is that that takes a lot of her time as well. The minutes took hours, I think. And with Amy being at those meetings, it'll be a lot easier and quicker for her to just jog up a summary for minutes or whatever. Instead of having Laura sit and listen to the whole meeting and trying to decipher what's what, be more efficient.
I don't think, Adam, there's any way we can tell how many hours we removed from Annie's position, but it is a considerable amount, a considerable amount.
I mean, and was Laura's adding the eight hours to her included in that cost difference?
Yes.
In the ten thousand dollar-ish range?
Yes. Yep.
I mean, that makes sense with my quick math.
Yep.
And then I guess.
And I do believe that some staff still have some concerns, but I think what both Tom and Michelle have said is that we're going to work through this, and if there are tweaks, things that need to be changed, we're, they're willing to, to listen to, to that. So it's really gonna be trial and error and see what works, see what doesn't work and go back and, and tweak it.
One of the main things that I wanna touch on, though, we mentioned though too, Adam, is you mentioned a year ago, we shot it down real fast. A year ago, we worked in the position of having, not having Annie or Annie resigning.
Or hiring Laura.
Yeah, but we're a totally different, more admin posi, or assistant admin position rather than what Annie was doing. So with taking and lightening that load considerably. Yeah, I don't know if we'll need, you know, part-time help as an admin assistant or not. I guess we gotta see how it all flows.
Well, I'm, I think we're all hoping not, but I think we have to keep our eyes open that, you know, probably a few things are gonna have to be tweaked as we go. And there is a possibility, we, we just don't know, that maybe we need a half-time person. There, there's no way of knowing until we address it.
Did I read somewhere over there, it should be in Office Two days a week, or did I miss to read that wrong?
That is correct, cause a lot of the days, she's gonna be out doing her EDA work, whether she's out like Scott Equipment or.
But she'll be in the area.
Right.
Yeah, that is correct. She'll be working in, you know, in the area. She's just gonna, and she's gonna be in the council chambers here as her office.
Okay.
She did not want to be down there discussing potential new business with a customer in the office with people standing at the counter, and all of a sudden, that goes all over town. Don't need that either. So figured it's best to get her a file cabinet for in here. She can have her privacy, bring her laptop in, and work off of that.
And there was a piece in here, I remember reading, or at least in one of the drafts, where she'll be available for her forty hours a week during the week, right, Russ?
Yeah, there's a clause that says that she's going to be available for contact during normal business hours by phone or internet. So, and, and that's the way she's operated in the past. You know, a lot of her activity has been over the phone or by internet, not face to face.
All right, so the Community Center stuff, that's gonna get, I mean, but she's not here. You know, there's a lot of people that come in, I would imagine, and there's a lot of people that call, you know, is that gonna get redirected to her then?
Absolutely.
Yes, everything to her.
Okay. And then I guess my last concern is why this wasn't brought up to the full council before we got to this far.
Well, it was, I guess from my viewpoint, it was kind of a quasi-emergency situation. So I threw this together for council consideration. And I guess I wasn't aware that, these, these most recent changes, I wasn't aware that the city had gone to a leave policy as opposed to vacation and sick leave. Uh, the leave or PTO, paid time off, that is the common trend. I think all the stolen employers have gone to that now. Uh, the reason is, you don't wanna worry about, well, do they have to bring a note to school saying, yes, I was sick and I can, that's just considered not professional anymore. But that, Pat caught that, I think, and that's why that most recent change. But, and this was stitched together from city administrative contract, Cynthia Smith-Strack's current contract, and some language out of the contract we have now with the county for the EDA Director services. So it's basically kind of Frankenstein in that sense. I took, you know, and just kind of stuck it together.
Right. I mean, I'm not saying it's a bad idea at all. I'm just, you know, to, to create a new position and, and when the last thing we talked about was hiring somebody for Annie, and then all of a sudden, we get a contract of completely new position that's not budgeted for, that we haven't discussed, it seems. I guess perception is, you know, it looks bad, in my, my opinion.
Does the change in the job title, would that have an impact on the, on the actual payable wage? I see it a lot in, in the industry. You change boards around a little bit, and if it affects what the salary can actually be. And it looks like we went from, you know, Economic Development Director and Planning and Zoning Director to Community Development Director. I'm not sure which one is more. I think the way that it was might have been more, just from looking at it, and therefore, the salary that it potentially brings, if you were to do a study, would be potentially less than, than what's proposed.
I would think if you looked at it, Economic Development and a Planning and Zoning Director and Cities, I would imagine were probably pretty, if you had one person, I would imagine were probably pretty good.
We're under probably what, and, and then throwing in the fact, all the added work. I mean, look at what City's pages for EDA Directors. You aren't getting them.
Yeah, I mean, we got some of them quotes from the bigger companies, and you guys didn't see that, so I'm, so you, I expected you to know that, but, you know, some of those bigger companies were thirty, forty thousand dollars just for one of these things, you know?
Yeah, and that doesn't count planning and zoning or any of the other stuff.
And then they come to, you gotta pay extra for meetings and.
Mileage, the whole game. See, I think that her wages is, is fair compared to what we would have had to have paid to, just for an EDA Director to drive to town, pay her the mileage, pay her time, pay her meeting time, plus the duties. Then we still would have to pay for a Planning and Zoning Director, and we'd have to put all that work back into that office and probably hire another full-time employee there. So we add all that up, this is hopefully less money than all of that.
Well, and getting Amy Newsom, I mean, that, that's a huge asset. It's a huge asset.
I was gonna say that. She's, I don't know what you can say not excellent about her. She will do an absolutely phenomenal job. I.
For the council's historical information, these positions were combined in the past. When we first hired Cynthia Smith-Strack's firm, consulting firm, they had both duties, EDA Director and Planning and Zoning. And, uh, you can put, you know, whatever kind of job description you want on paper, but it's the person who makes the position. And I think the perception is that, you know, Amy has been excellent in the Economic Development Director position, and, you know, with a little training. I think the consensus is she'd do an excellent job with planning and zoning too. And it addresses one concern for the newest council members, that there appeared to be some friction or, uh, kind of counterbalancing between Economic Development and Planning and Zoning. And some of that is natural, and Economic Development, let's get a new business in town. Planning and zoning, well, let's make sure they abide by the rules, okay? And sometimes the new business doesn't like the rules or, you know, wants, wants, whatever. And so, but with the right person, those things can, should hopefully flow together smoothly. And I guess recent history, maybe we haven't had that smooth flow, you know, the, the way it, we would want it ideally.
Yeah, I guess the big thing is trying to find some efficiencies, right? Efficiencies out of the office and kind of make things fit better, kind of categorical sense, dividing up the jobs, so.
Is there a motion?
I will make a motion to approve the contract with Amy Newsom for Community Development Director position.
Second.
Motion, excuse me, a motion by Councilmember Haddelstead, seconded by Councilmember Gilman, to approve the contract with Amy Newsom for Community Development Director position. Is there further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, I should have inserted this earlier. You'll note that there are blank dates, and I did establish for Amy that she does have a thirty-day termination notice requirement with her present county position. The city currently has a contract with the county for EDA services from the county, which is Amy. And in that contract, we have a thirty-day termination clause. Our current Planning and Zoning Director, Cynthia Smith-Strack, has submitted her resignation effective November fifteen. Combining all those things together, I guess our suggestion is that we make this effective November fifteen. That gives us, all parties concerned, time to give the termination notices, and then that also, you know, smoothly transitions from Cynthia, November fifteen, to Amy.
Would, would there be any benefit of having Amy come on a week before to coordinate with Cynthia at all, as far as catch her up on anything, or, or not really?
I don't think so.
Was Amy at the Community Center meeting the other night?
Yes, yes.
She was there, okay. I was kind of hoping that if we did this, she would be there, so she'd be abreast of a few things that are going on and not thrown at her afterwards.
Yeah, there was a lot of stuff there, so it was good she was there.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks for that input, Attorney Arneson.
So with the motion, do we need a date, start date?
I will change my motion to November fifteenth, two thousand nineteen.
Good, okay, again, Councilmember Haddelstead has made the motion to approve the contract with Amy Newsom for Community Development Director position effective and starting November fifteenth. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, no. Motion carried. Item fourteen, approve or deny recruitment of additional seasonal part-time plow drivers?
Included in your packet, Councilmembers, was a job posting. This would be for a part-time, temporary, part-time seasonal individual to help out with snow plowing. Obviously, this last winter was quite a winter for snow emergencies, and so Kirby would like to put an ad out. He currently has a couple individuals who are serving as backup. But oftentimes, it's tough to get these individuals because they're working other, other jobs. So he's looking to advertise, the salary is fourteen dollars an hour. Uh, they have to possess and maintain a valid Minnesota Class D license. Typically, Kirby doesn't put them into the big plow truck, but has them driving a pickup truck with a plow on it and doing some, uh, snow cleanup around the city, so. Looking for your approval for him to go ahead and post and get a few more individuals in his pool.
Are we, are these added part-time drivers going to be called every snowfall, or just when there's big snowfalls?
Just when they're needed.
Just when they're needed, when they're, we get the big ones.
Yes, yep.
So as, when you say a pool, it's just like I have five people to see who can come in instead of just three people?
Not all five are coming.
Very similar to what we'll be talking about with the Community Center attended. It's just having individuals who would be able to be called up if needed. They may not be available when Kirby makes a call. Hopefully, a bigger pool means that there will be somebody available.
They'll find a couple at least.
Correct.
I'll make a motion to approve recruitment of additional seasonal part-time plow drivers.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Cowell, seconded by Councilmember Batchor, to approve the recruitment of additional seasonal part-time plow drivers. Any further questions? Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, no. Motion carried. Item fifteen, approve or deny increasing administrative assistant Laura Dykoff from thirty-two hours to forty hours?
Currently, uh, starting September sixteenth, which is when we no longer had Annie, Laura has been putting in a forty-hour work week, helping us to keep on top of the workload. And I'm looking for approval to go ahead and to make that, uh, permanent back to September sixteenth, uh, now for her in her role in administration.
So what does going back to September sixteenth do for her?
That's a date that.
Well, I know, but what is that, I mean?
So it benefits and or pay, right? Well, not pay so much. She, she'd get paid the same amount of money for right now, so.
Well, she's getting paid, right, I mean.
It'd be for the, whatever the time period it takes in order to get the benefits.
Benefit accrual would start on the sixteenth of September.
Pro-rate.
Because right now, she's still at that thirty-two hour.
Well, right, but I mean, to get last month's health insurance doesn't do any.
Prorated.
I mean, what, what, what is she gaining by getting benefits from a month ago?
No, no, it's, it's, I guess I don't, I'd have to read through it, but typically, you have to be with a company for sixty or ninety days in order to get, um, to be eligible to have.
She's been here for a while.
But full-time though, like you have to be full-time.
And with the city of Arlington, basically, your health insurance becomes. And with the city of Arlington, uh, basically your health insurance becomes effective the day that you start, so. Uh, she would be qualifying for a hundred percent, uh, well, the, the city pays sixty percent. Employee pays forty, so she would qualify for that full sixty percent, starting September sixteen.
I'll make a motion to approve the increasing administrative assistant Laura Dykoff, um. Uh, and provide full-time benefits re- retroactive to the sixteenth of September.
Second.
Motion by council member Batchelor, second by council member Hattledale to approve increasing administrative assistant Laura Dykoff from thirty-two hours to forty hours. And provide full benefits retroactive to September sixteen, twenty nineteen. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, motion is ordered, uh, motion is ordered, all papers say aye?
Aye.
Close no? Motion carried. Item sixteen, uh, just for discussion purposes, discussing the, uh, following recommendations from the community center committee.
Adam, feel free to.
Yeah, I can.
If you wanna take them, go ahead.
Are we discussing this or, I thought, I know some of them wanted to be immediate.
Yeah, I, I believe the item, item, uh, C is something that, uh, would be a future change, but item A, B and, uh. Well, A and B can definitely be acted upon now, item C and D.
C, I think they wanted to do with all new renters and then item D was for the future. So I guess first one, um, with Laura running it, there's been a lot of requests for setups. And so either her or Kirby or Mike are setting up the community center quite often. Um, and for a hundred dollars, you know, it, it wasn't worth it, so we decided to double that and then, um, recommend to double that. And also try to search out some groups, community groups that would. Maybe be interested in doing that instead of having our employees do it and paying them the two hundred dollars.
Just to take workload off our street employees.
Or, or Laura or Amy.
Yeah, whoever, wow, yeah.
Can they come up with some kind of, I don't know, brochure or flyer on how that would actually work and what they would have to commit to? Right, so if you gave.
Have to set up.
Right, so if you gave me a piece of paper and it said, um, this is an opportunity for you or your group to commit to. How many days or just one event or five events or you'll be given a calendar and whatever.
It was kinda like the pool thing too, just try to, I mean, you get renters for months in advance, so to try to, then you reach out to the people you have. And I know with Kurt being on there, that he said to choose our own thing group is looking to raise some money, so they thought that might be a good opportunity for them, so.
So, but I mean, laid out so that we can hand it out to different groups and they're all on the same page and have the same information?
Right.
That would be great, yeah.
So far we have had the cross-country team, I believe, has, uh.
Oh, good.
Uh, volunteered to, to do an event or two.
Nice.
Yeah, if we could get three, four of them, that would probably take the workload off the street department, right? Or at least a lot of it.
Right, and, I mean, people were having whatever eight, nine hundred dollar weddings and for another hundred dollars, you know, it's a no-brainer for them to do it. So I mean, at least we're getting something to have our people do it, so we need a motion on that?
Okay, yes, please.
I'll make a motion to, um, raise our room setup fees for the community center, um, uh, double them from what they are now.
Second.
For all new reservations?
For all new reservations.
Motion by council member Batchelor, second by council member Gilman to increase the, uh, event setup charge from a hundred dollars to. Two hundred dollars effective for all new, um, reservations.
And fifty-two, a hundred dollars for new, uh.
And fifty-two, a hundred dollars for event setup fee, okay, so one is the event setup fee, the other is, what's?
Uh, there's two separate fees, one is for an individual room and the other is.
Okay, I see individual room and the other.
So that's why I said double the fees.
Okay, double the fees, alright. Okay, any discussion on that? If not, all papers say aye?
Aye.
Close no? Motion carried. Adam?
Oh, uh, so second one, consider posting for additional community center attendants, I think we have one person right now, um, so we gotta get more people in the pool. So that we can, I mean, twenty-five dollars an hour for a five-hour night is a pretty good, pretty good gig, so.
I'll make a motion to, to, um, post for community center attendants at twenty-five dollars an hour.
Second.
One thing that you, uh, may wanna consider, uh, in looking back at previous job postings, one of the things that was listed in there. Was that the individual, uh, should be certified in CPR, first aid or able to be certified within sixty days. The current individuals that we have on the, in the pool are not, uh, first aid CPR certified. So that would be a question for the council, do you believe that that is an important, uh, skill to have as a community center attendant? Or do you not wish to have that included in that?
Are we gonna hurt ourselves, the only thing I'm, I'm wondering if we're gonna hurt ourselves by requiring that? And if we didn't and we had a situation, do we have the option of calling the police department since all our police officers are E M T certified?
Right.
Not to put more workload on you chief, but.
We would respond, yeah.
I, they're, they're, since they're always on duty, they're minutes away, I know sometimes it's, minutes are important, but. I, I don't know if they were gonna hurt our candidate pool by requiring you to be E M C, S, E M T certified for twenty-five bucks.
First aid and CPR.
Or, huh?
First aid and CPR.
So it's not E M T.
Okay, they don't have, they're just first aid certified.
Not a lot of people that are.
It's, it's something that you can take online.
It's.
Oh, it's not a big deal?
Not really, but you have to be recertified every two years.
Oh, well, then that's maybe not that big a deal.
It's not that big of a deal, but.
If the current person is not and it's on the requirement, can there potentially be liability? I mean, wouldn't it be worth taking that off of the description if it's not real?
I'll agree.
Yeah, this person could be grandfathered, I guess, uh.
We don't have a liability issue with that, Ross, that most are certified, but, well, they gave us an uncertified one and so-so got usually bad because.
There's a possibility of that, I'd say it's remote, but we have the opportunity just to read it from the job description, that would be clear.
I'm thinking that would be probably.
Delete it.
Delete it.
I was surprised when I, when Pat told me that was on there, I just thought, oh.
Most likely if you have a wedding or an event, you're, you know, you've got a hundred, two hundred people, somebody within the group is gonna have it.
Is, is, yeah. Yeah, that's true. Okay. Did we vote on the?
No.
No, okay, uh, motion by Batchelor, second by Gilman to consider posting. Or to authorize posting for additional community center attendance at twenty-five dollars an hour. All papers say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Close no? Motion carried.
Uh, number C, so, uh, in the fee schedule now, there's three lines, um, and they're listed on your agenda. The ten-dollar offense for, uh, decorating violation, um, so that'd be something like, if, just recent examples that Laura gave. Um, somebody put command strips up, you take the command and it says specifically you can't use them, you take them down, it pulls, peels the paint. You got Kirby or Mike here painting for a couple hours, you buy in paint, and so ten dollars for five of those doesn't hardly.
No.
Cover even any time, uh, fifty dollars for glass bottles found, they had one where they had the whole parking lot full. And additional cleaning, I mean, that's up to interpretation, but I guess the, the committee recommended getting rid of all three of those. And kind of including them in, um, what violations may cause you to lose your full deposit. Rather than, I mean, if you damage the, the building or you do, do you have glass in the parking lot, you lose your deposit.
Okay, you're gonna totally lose it if you have one offense, there's no pro rate.
Gotta, I mean, if there's one little command strip on the wall and it comes off clean, you know, I mean, I'm sure they're not gonna.
Yeah, so it's up to the discretion of the community center director or whatever.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's two hundred and fifty dollars is our damaged deposit, that's it?
Well, yeah, I mean, that's a lot.
Yeah, it's not a lot.
Yeah, but our rent is what, eight hundred?
Have we ran into a problem where a two hundred and fifty dollar damage deposit was not enough, ever? Well, I should say ever.
Probably.
Are we usually okay with that, that the damage never exceeding two fifty?
Yeah, I, I, I believe that we're usually okay with that, I mean, sometimes through our own fault, we maybe haven't held back as much.
Well, and.
That's what we heard.
Yeah, one other comment Laura made was that we were giving the money back too soon. Um, there's a, in the policy, it says thirty days and it had been given back sooner than a couple weeks down the road, something arose.
Yeah.
So, so they're gonna stick to that policy, you know?
I think an instance was, uh, when there was a wedding here and an individual had flushed some sunglasses down. Well, it wasn't until later after the money had begin, been given back that they had to have, uh, um, a router or somebody come in and, and.
Get the toilet off, didn't they?
Yeah, it was pretty significant, work that they had to do, which would have been nice to have the damaged deposit covered.
Are the next two, the C and the D combined or whatever?
Is something for the future, so it's nothing we're gonna worry about today.
Even, even the C, is that something that should go back to committee to come up with the plan in a dollar amount?
C, no, I think we should, I mean, I guess I'd be in favor of improving to getting rid of those line items now and if we wanna change the. Security deposit or damage deposit in the future, maybe we can look at that.
So just take the line, so it's just taking the line items out for each thing?
Yeah.
And then it's just per?
If you have damage, you lose your deposit.
Or if you're, or you leave a mess or whatever, you lose your deposit.
Doesn't that seem kind of vague, I mean, if there's damage, you lose your deposit, I mean, how are we?
We should, I think we should have some, I'm agreeing, we should have some description in there. Whether it was damage to the paint or glass bottles or cigarette butts or, uh, something tore, a hole kicked in a wall.
And that was the recommendation was to add, take these line items and add them kinda to what violations could cause you to lose your deposit.
I think we have to have a list of what's going to cause you to lose your deposit.
And that was the recommendation.
Well, from a legal standpoint, I think in that type of clause, you'd normally say something to the effect that the city reserves the right in its discretion to. Um, uh, retain from the damaged deposit, the city's cost of cleaning or repair of. And then we could say, for example, uh, you know, cigarette butt burns, uh.
Including but not limited to.
Yes, yes, the mayor's got the, the magic language, so, I, I guess if, if the city staff wanted me to come up with a language, I could. It, it's some fairly standardized language for this kind of thing.
I, I would, I would agree with that a hundred percent and consensus to whatever is written up in that respect. That, that seems more fair and covers everything.
Is there a post-inspection that's currently done to?
I believe so, yeah.
I think so.
Checklist.
Uh, sunglasses one is kinda, you know, it wasn't somebody just.
A day before. Yeah, that's a hippie. Yeah, cuz it could have, you didn't find out till maybe ten days later and it could have happened five days prior.
Yeah.
When they had dance class for the little kids or something.
Right.
Do you need a motion for that?
I don't know, do we wanna wait or make a motion using Ross's language or whatever you really wanna do?
If you wanna bring some language back at the next meeting so that we can, um, look at it?
For item C?
For item C, yeah, table it. And then the last one?
Um, yeah, the last one, just maybe next, come June, when the, the, or around June, um. Since we only have one liquor pers- or company right now, um, and there's been some battle back and forth, but, um. To open it up for bids, to have a yearly, whoever bids and we'll have a, hopefully a list of what you're bidding on. And then you'll get it for the year, so you open it to all three and then there's that, that's the company that gets it and then we know what they're charging. For their stuff, there's no, you know, there's no leeway, and they can't, they can't just do what they want.
And it'll be the same all the time.
Yes.
Okay.
That's it.
Alright, so then we tabled item C for consideration at a future meeting.
As well as D.
As D, yeah, that will be further down the road. Okay, any more on that? If not, we'll move on to item seventeen, uh, approve or deny partial pay estimate from William Mueller and Sons on the street project.
Enclosed in your packet was a, uh, pay request that's signed by Mueller. As well as Bolton and Lake in the amount of five hundred and sixty-four thousand, three hundred and one dollars and sixty-one cents. Uh, overall, the, uh, two thousand nineteen street and, uh, utility improvement project is, is going very well. Uh, we've had a few minor issues, but, uh, I would say overall, uh, things have been going smoothly, so. And I predict they will be seeding grass tomorrow, 'cause they got everything looking pretty good and I.
In some areas.
Just in time. Some areas, yeah. You got free nitrogen on your grass.
That's, that's great, yeah, they're gonna be hydro seeding at least, doesn't take long to do that, so.
I'll make a motion to approve partial pay estimate number four from William Mueller and Sons in the amount of. Five hundred and sixty-four thousand, three hundred and one dollars and sixty-one cents for the twenty nineteen street improvement project.
Second.
Motion by council member Batchelor, second by council member Cowell to approve the partial pay estimate number four from William Mueller and Sons Inc. In the amount of five hundred and sixty-four thousand, three hundred and one dollars and sixty-one cents for work on the twenty nineteen street and utility improvement project. Any questions?
Not a number of payments, I guess, I, I wasn't able to open the packet up.
This is number four, I think, partial payment.
This is number four.
I think at the end of the day, we just, it's up to whatever percentage that they complete. And then at the end of the day, we retain, is it five or ten percent of the whole bid?
Five percent.
Percent of the whole bid until it's totally completed.
And everybody's happy.
And everybody's happy.
Then the fin- then the final payment is made.
That was my only concern.
Yep, yeah, we have that set aside.
Sometimes things come up that.
Yeah, and they have in the past.
So it'd be a total project cost of two point three million.
Okay, any other questions? Hearing none, all papers say aye?
Aye.
Close no? Motion carried. Item number eighteen, discussion about potential repair expenses for fatal arms and fire truck pump tests.
So I had a good conversation with, uh, the fire chief, John Zaski, today, uh, talking a little bit about this. Uh, supposedly the, uh, fire truck pump tests, uh, basically when they go out to, uh. To deal with a fire, they throw kind of a vacuum type thing into a, a water source and then they're able to pull the water from there. Uh, a number of his trucks, he was kinda surprised by this, didn't, didn't realize this was going to happen. But he's had a number of them that have had, uh, a failed pump test, so that's a requirement. Uh, that they have to be able to, you know, pick up and push that much water through the. Uh, through the system into their hoses, uh, to deal with fires. He, he presented the bill, uh, which is about twenty thousand here for some of the fire trucks. Not all the fire trucks have been tested, so he's continuing to do that. He just wanted me to bring this up to you as, uh, an item for discussion. There will be some expenses associated with getting these trucks repaired, probably not twenty thousand. John has typically done a pretty good job of, of finding ways to get things done a little less expensive. Uh, nonetheless, we do need to identify a potential source for some of these, uh, expenses, so. We'll find out more as time goes, time goes on and the additional equipment gets tested. I said, are our residents, if somebody has a fire in the country, is there going to be problems or any challenges? And he said, no, uh, they're still gonna be able to address fires, they've got newer equipment that doesn't have this type of. Water access system, uh, so it's not something that should be, cause alarm, but it does need to be addressed.
So it's just not pumping the, out the gallons per hour that it's rated or should?
Yeah, it, it's.
Maybe supposed to pump a thousand and we're only sucking up nine twenty-five.
Yeah, yeah.
How often, do we know how often they get inspected, is it a yearly thing or?
It was every year.
Correct, I believe it's every.
So then whatever problems that they're experiencing now has dropped up within the last year?
Yep. Yep, yep, they had a, uh, a ninety-eight, uh, fire truck as well as a two thousand fourteen, uh, that both failed the test, so even, well, one would consider newer equipment, uh, has even had some of those challenges, so, uh.
I noticed on the estimates, there's a lot of small stuff that actually have been, is not operating, which I'm sure they can, in, in fact, he indicates that a lot of this can be done in-house, uh, but you know, broken things, or lights broken, or a bracket broken, or a door handle, that type of thing, so, um, so I'm sure a lot of it, they, you know, they can do it themselves.
Do we have funds available somewhere to pay for these repairs?
You know, we do have funds available in our capital improvement, uh, fund. You know, in a situation like this, where you need to have money available, we certainly do have money there. We do also have some money market accounts, uh, that we have some cash, uh, available. But I would recommend at this time to probably go with the capital improvement fund, and we can possibly take and reallocate money from that, uh, money market account, back into account for what we're taking out.
Is this something that's worth getting a second opinion? I mean, that, the years that you said on the, on the trioxide, you know, I'm not sure where they were tested.
Good point.
Well, I have a second opinion for the fixes, but I think these people are the ones that do the inspections, I don't think you get it on.
There's one inspector, state of the.
Sure, but I, I mean, he, he's not necessarily just gonna use these bids for getting them fixed.
No, but even the, having it inspected, is there, is there another?
I, I believe there's very few in talking with John, and, yeah, i- it's somewhat awkward that the same one who is diagnosing your problem is also giving you a court fix.
Give you the bid to fix it.
So.
Yeah, it is.
But, but because there are very few who are kind of in this specific area, uh, that's.
So would they, would they retest it after the repair is done to, to, to provide the?
As far as the pump is concerned, yeah?
And they would certi- they would certify it, certify it, correct? I'm not sure what type of warranty would go with it. But yes, they would certify it that now it's, it's acceptable.
So for all of these small items, do they write them up for that too? In other words, are those items that they can say they're out of compliance with, if there's a, a broken, well, for instance, uh, left hood horn trumpet bracket is broken, replace bracket.
Yeah.
I, I think they put some extra things in there.
I think so.
To try and.
And.
I, as I was.
If they're working on the truck, we can also do this and this and this.
As I was reading this today, I thought, I, I know some of those firemen, and if there's something broken, they're not gonna leave it broken and ignore it, they're gonna fix it.
They would fix it as each item broke.
I would think so.
Something breaks on the truck, you get back, maybe the next day if they've been out there eighteen hours, but, yeah, you don't let
No.
Fourteen things go, oh, we got a big problem.
They're proud of that equipment.
I, I agree.
They wanna keep it. Posted.
As top notch as they can.
And John did say later that he'd, he would investigate his options before presenting the full.
Okay.
Whatever, full findings are.
So there's no, no action necessary at this time?
I think just, just as long as we have kind of an idea of where those funds would come from, uh, should they be, be needed, it'll come to the council for further approval, once that number is finalized.
Okay. Okay, any other discussion on that? Hearing none, we'll move on to item nineteen, discussion regarding the city of Arlington's opportunity to opt out of the federal opioid litigation. Attorney Arneson, would you wanna?
Well, Mr. Mayor, uh, both the city office and, uh, the, uh, chief's office separately received notice that there's a, uh, federal class action suit being started, uh, uh, regarding the, uh, um, bad effects of, uh, indiscriminate opioid, uh, distribution, uh, on communities. And, uh, uh, the way a class action suit works, uh, you have to be certified by the court, uh, showing that you're representing a significant number of the affected individuals, or in this case, affected, uh, communities and government entities. And, um, I believe this was out of Ohio, federal district court in Ohio, I don't remember which jurisdiction, but anyway, um, uh, when they, uh, choose a class, they have to notify all prospective members of that class that they, uh, intend to go forward with this, and those members of the class uh, have the right to opt out and say, no, no thanks, we're not gonna be part of your suit. Um, the only time that makes any sense though is if you want to maintain your own lawsuit. And so whenever I have a client who receives one of these class action suit notices, I always tell them, uh, well, are you going to sue, uh, three M yourself? No, well then, why opt out? Uh, uh, it, it probably is not gonna be a real boon to the city, but, uh, uh, since we're not intending to sue the drug companies on our own, uh, my advice is to not opt out. And if we don't opt out, uh, we don't have to make any response of any kind. Uh, then it's presumed that we're included in the suit, and my final advice to clients always is, well, the result of this is probably gonna be in six months or a year or two years from now, you'll get a check in the mail for a dollar and twenty cents for your share of the settlement. So.
That's about right. Okay, so Attorney Arneson's recommendation is to not opt out at this time? Is there any discussion on that? So, then no action necessary on that, item at all. Item twenty, approval denied, planning committee recommendations.
Council members, I maybe should've worded this a little bit differently, uh, the planning committee made some recommendations, and on others, they did not. Uh, included in the collection of papers in front of you, you will see a number of memos from Cynthia Smith Strack. In those memos, she's, uh, taking a look at, uh, several of those recommendations. The first one of which is to create a new zoning district, which would be kind of a industrial, commercial uh, type blend. This is maybe information that you would like to, uh, take and, uh, consider and come back at a future date after having more time to.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I can't, I can't look at this in ten minutes and learn that.
And it just came in, uh, this morning, so it was not available at the time.
Well, I'll make a motion to table, um, the planning commission's, um, recommendations.
Motion by council member Batchers, second by council member Cowell, to table the planning, uh, commission's recommendations for council action. Any questions, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close now, motion carried. Batcher, Batcher and Cowell. Alright, moving down to item twenty-one, council member committee updates, any committees to report on?
I can go quick, library, um, there you got some new shelvins, and it's all completely redesigned, remodeled, I guess. Uh, the shelving is, um, all set up. Um, the, the summer reading program was down from where they had been, and all their programs, they had canceled, cause they didn't get enough. Um, so, um, but they're trying to get people to come and speak for different things, trying to get programming, that's the big thing. And then, community center, we went over a lot of it, the, the only thing we didn't really talk about is rentals are way up higher than they've been, um, since we've recorded. And a lot of that has to do with the Sunday rentals, um, where we dropped the price down to a hundred and fifty dollars for a room. Um, so, yeah, there are two hundred and twenty-one rentals for the year, and, uh, the highest before that was, I think, a hundred and eighty-four, and that goes back to two thousand thirteen, so.
That's good.
Still three months left.
Yeah, that's more revenue.
No kidding, we need it.
We need the revenue.
Yeah, any street, go ahead.
Uh, planning commission, you see it all here, so I'll let you read what we did. We talked about a couple of different suggestions or, or changes to a few of the different ordinances.
Cable, uh, you, you don't, cable commission, I was on a state and I haven't got the minutes yet in the meeting, so I can't report to anything, and the street committee, we haven't met. What else is there?
Police committee.
Yes.
The police committee.
But I don't think we really resolved anything.
No, but we did get an update on, on what was going on and the improvements that were made down at the, uh, police department and the, uh, we got to see firsthand the garage and the storage, um, units that had been updated and.
The new camera system down there, and kudos to Officer Knoxen, from my understanding, did the majority of the wiring, and he, it looks like he did about a professional a job, as any professional we would have hired.
Probably better.
Yeah, it was very neat, very well done. Very well, they've done a lot in, in the police station in the last, since John has arrived. Been some major improvements. Thank you, John.
Okay, anything else under committee updates? If not, we'll open up, open discussion. Matt, I know you had something.
I was hoping, uh, council members to maybe start looking a little bit at schedules. Uh, what I'd like to do is possibly schedule three, uh, meetings, uh, hopefully to maybe cancel one, but to start going through uh, budgets so that you can see what departments are requesting, and, uh, if you'd like to, uh, make changes to that, so. Uh, again, looking to see if perhaps we can maybe get three meetings scheduled. Um, one possibility, uh, would be, uh, Wednesday evenings at six o'clock. I know, Michelle, I think you mentioned Wednesday evenings were open, if there is such thing as open. Uh, but, uh, possibly the sixteenth, the twenty-third, and the thirtieth.
I won't be available on the sixteenth.
Okay.
And I'm not sure about the twenty-third, Lorraine's having, uh, ACL surgery on the sixteenth.
Shepers, you, you. I could make the first two, but, and I could try to make the third, but if Michelle can't make it, I'd. I can probably make close to anything work unless you give me a deer hunting weekend. And there's a lot of that coming up.
Is there any way that, how, how long of a meeting do you need? Is there any way that we can do it before a council meeting or anything like that?
Sure, we could, we, we could certainly try that. Uh, one of the options that we have is, you know, we've got an EDA coming up on, uh, fourteenth, otherwise we do have a council meeting on the twenty-first.
Right.
What I would just like to do is I'd like to kinda keep it moving so that we can, you know, have things wrapped up earlier versus.
Earlier than six weeks, so we did once every two weeks. Cause if we, if we did one before each council meeting, we're looking at six weeks.
Yeah.
Well, we're looking at a month from the date.
But then we're still.
Start the first one.
We're still, we still have the whole month of December though.
Correct.
But we don't want you.
We have.
We don't have.
We have.
No, I know, but I mean, if it, if it's only three.
The TNT meeting, December.
Oh, that's right, truth and praxation.
Is it second or?
Something nailed down.
So, I mean, we really should have something done so that we can have that.
Can we get the first one on the twenty-first, right before the council meeting? If that works for everybody? I mean, at least we got the first one done.
About like five o'clock?
I'm open.
Five work, what about time wise, Adam? Five's gonna, would work for you?
I don't know, I'll try, no promises. And that's a Monday, right?
Correct. Laura?
Yeah.
Joe?
Yeah, Adam.
Five o'clock.
Five o'clock on the twenty-first. Uh, budget.
Can we schedule a second one, maybe? The cemetery committee meets at six o'clock on the twenty-eighth?
Works for me.
What time, what time would you be able to do, Michelle or Adam?
Think, what'd you say the cemetery meet?
Is that six?
Parks usually, is that night too?
Parks have that done for that night.
Oh, wait, I'm trying to think what night the EDA is.
The EDA is.
Fourteenth this month, fourteenth, so, yeah, we don't have to worry about that till November, that's, works for me.
Well, do you wanna do the fourteenth before the, uh, they have a hearing scheduled for seven o'clock?
Oh, okay.
Yeah, with Hampton Heaven, I think it is.
Okay, that's right.
Yeah, we got a, kind of a full night there.
Yeah, that one's cool. How about, so Wednesday, the sixteenth, you said it was out?
That's the day of surgery.
So then what about Wednesday, the?
Well, we're doing one the twenty-third, twenty sec, twenty-first. Spit it out.
Does the thirtieth? Thirtieth work for people?
It would work for me.
Well, it opened for me. Could we do six? Six work for you, Michelle?
Well, I mean, ask these other guys, I mean, anytime after whatever, I'm sure.
If it doesn't work, say so.
My, my issue, by then, I think, uh, she might be fine to be on her own.
So, twenty-first at five P M workshop, these are all workshops.
She brought her that night. Torres yelled, she brought her to the meeting.
I did not know that that wasn't happening.
As she was limping in.
She was supposed to be fine, they said she would play Tuesday. That was Thursday I brought her.
So six o'clock on the thirtieth?
Sure.
Correct, everybody works?
Sure.
So we'll have, we'll have two scheduled, the twenty-first and the thirtieth.
Okay, that's a good start.
And go from there. November then, if we need.
Yeah, if we can.
Yeah.
End of one or two more meetings during November before Thanksgiving, and we're all set.
That would be nice.
In the meantime, I'm working on a CIP and on the full wages. Put together salary schedule for that, so.
Okay.
Which, I guess brings another question, uh, it has been Michelle and Tom on the finance committee I've been working with, with regards to the wage schedule. Uh, that'll be now Laura and Michelle.
I don't have to come no more.
Are you okay with that?
Well, I'm fine. I never argue about one less meeting.
Okay.
No, not a problem whatsoever at all.
Okay.
Seems kinda heartbroken.
I'm not gonna sleep tonight over this.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that motion.
Motion by council member Batchers, second by council member Cowell, to adjourn the meeting, all in favor, say aye.
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 Wonderful, wonderful, wonderful. I had no idea.
That's a Torres. That's funny.
She couldn't string it, she couldn't bend it.
I'm just kinda slow tonight.
And like Monday, I'm like, really? So Tuesday. I called and they're like, oh, you shouldn't schedule it.
It's just like guessing answer C, right? Most of the time, you're gonna be right.
And we got her in on Wednesday, they, uh, early in the morning, uh, doctor appointment. Back in the morning, they got the MRI done, and they said, oh, call on Friday, I said, okay, they call me on Thursday. Friday.
You missed a good book festival.
Was it? Okay, how, how was it turned out?
It, it, I didn't have the traffic that I hoped, but we actually, most of the people that were there were coming in from outside of the area. We had people coming in from Minneapolis, we had people travel from Wilton, yeah, so we had two, I mean, it was a rainy day over the course of the day, we had two hundred and six people, and, um, the folks that did come had just wonderful things to say. Um, the locals that I talked to, they, most of them didn't know what a book festival was.